Bill 337. Madam Speaker, I understand you're going to be speaking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of Speaker Panglinen, he had asked that his bill, Bill number 337-31COR, an act to add a new subsection I to Section 75108 and to add a new section 75121 to Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code Antedated Relative to Leases and Licenses for Chamorland Trust Commissioned Properties and for other purposes, if this could be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to just briefly discuss the bill on his behalf.
On that notion hearing, no objections awarded.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, again. It's a very simple bill, and it's to the point, but there are, of course, an amendment that the Senator asked if I can provide, but just to briefly, I guess, let everyone know is that if you look in Section 2, is that what this act is calling for is that the commission shall not approve any lease or license for any type of activity or development on any Chamorland Trust property that will not allow the use of such property for agricultural or residential development upon the expiration or termination of such lease or license. Now, it continues on, of course, "Any such license or lease where such use is authorized shall be declared now and void," and he realizes that that, you know, may not really fly because, you know, as we know, that once contracts are already signed and leases are given out, it would be very difficult to be able to go for the legislature to try and nullify or void that particular lease. So what then the amendment is that has been passed out is to delete that last sentence then on Section 3, that any such lease or license where such use is authorized shall be declared now and void, and so that is the amendment.
On the amendment proposed by Speaker Wampat, any senator wish to be heard on the amendment? Hearing, no objection. Hold on a sec, I'm sorry. Senator Tom Addit, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Well, I certainly am in support of the bill, I'm just kind of trying to understand what it is here that we're trying to prohibit, and it seems that the only activity on a property that will not allow the land to be used subsequently for agricultural or residential development is if it was used for acquiring operation, where you end up digging a big, you know, big hole, and so you're certainly not going to do any other than that, I'm really just kind of at a loss as to what other uses, you know, could be, what other activity could take place on that property that would not be able to restore that land back for agricultural or residential use. And if that is the case, then it would seem that maybe we may want to be more, you know, direct about it, I don't know, maybe there's an advantage in staying, in being vague about it, but I just kind of raised that concern. But I also, I also, I don't know, you know, with the amendment that was made to delete that sentence, "Any such lease, license or lease where such use is authorized shall be declared null and void," I don't know, maybe I think we need just a little bit of recess so that we understand, because what is basically, I'm just not sure I understand what all we did here with that amendment.
We'll have a recess. Senator Barnes and Senator Duennius, any other senators wish to speak on the amendment? Senator Barnes.
Si, si, mase, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, not that I had any contention with the amendment, but since I'm speaking on the amendment, as I look at this bill, I'm just really taken, I guess puzzled or perplexed or whatever. As I see the intent of the bill and wanting to protect the land development and making sure that after infrastructures are put in place and contracts are, has completed its deadline or timeline, then it goes back for residential development and/or agriculture development, and my take is that, based on the way I see this bill, it just, for me, I think it's a little bit too vague. If we want to protect something and we want to protect it, then let's specify this in writing. I have no objections, Mr. Speaker, to the amendment to delete "Any such lease or lease where such use is authorized shall be declared now and void," I think that that's a good amendment to delete. My concern is the total bill and what perceived is--
Let's just stay on the bill.
So, on the amendment.
Senator Duennius? Is Senator Duennius? I saw his hand up. You're recognized, Senator Duennius. On the amendment, please.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Speaker, after our discussions that we had during the recess, it satisfied my concerns in terms of the projects that have been discussed, and I think many offices that were approached by different developers intending on inquiring for land trust property, so I think during the recess we settled those issues. trust property. So, I think during the recess, we settled those issues and we'll go forward with the motion. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
On the amendment, any objection? Hearing or seeing no objection. On the main motion, anyone, anyone wish to speak? Senator Barnes?
Si, señor presidente, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, as I look at the intent of this bill, to, to assure, to preserve the integrity of the Chamor Land Trust lands for our future generation, these lands must not be used or abused in its development, which will render land inhabitable or unsuitable for the use by the Chamor Land Trust beneficiaries for the production of food sources and use of shelter and homes. I, I, I'm looking at the sections that are needing to be added and included into the Title 21 Guam Code annotated. And, and my concern is that this, this, these sections may be a little bit too vague for me, or it may be, something that's interpreted here can be perceived to be completely different. Take, for example, a, a commercial user had built a facility that was beneficial to the whole community, and the term of the contract has expired after, whether it be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years, I think it's the max, and the, the improvements made to the facility then gets returned. And unless it's for agriculture and residential development, everything else has to be raised, meaning it has to be demolished. And that's where my concern gets me, is because in our efforts to develop what little land that we have, if something is good and good for, for everybody, for the whole island, then why break it? Why break something that's not broken? And I, I want to support the intent of the bill, but I just have concerns. If we really, just earlier when we were in, in recess, we heard from legal counsel what, what is in place and what protections are already included in law when it comes to those leases that have already been, that have already been acquired before this, this legislation, if it gets passed into law, that based on the clause, Act, that, contracts clause, that those things are already protected. But again, based on interpretation and what could be perceived as, as what is actually written here, that it would, after the use of, the permitted use of a licensed vendor using the, using this property is already, if the lease is terminated and it has to be returned back unless it's being used for, for agriculture or residential, if there's already a development on there, then it gets automatically terminated. That's where my concern is. And I'm just, I, I'm just going to continue to listen to see, see if any of my other colleagues have the same concern I do in as far as the vagueness of this, and hopefully that I can find it in my heart to protect the intent of, of, of protecting the integrity of Chamor Land Trust for a specific use for our generations to come. So, I will continue to listen contentedly and hoping before the end of this bill being deliberated on that maybe one of my good colleagues can enlighten me and share some hope so that this bill can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator Duñez, on the main bill, on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and truly, this is the, the place where I should be expressing my sentiment in terms of what I was going to speak on during the amendment. While I really and truly understand the intent that the author is putting forward here and respect the integrity and the desire to maintain the integrity of the, the reason for the program. You know, many times, Mr. Speaker, I, I was actually kind of misquoted in terms of some intentions that I had put forward, even in proposing what the governor did now in terms of reorganizing, reorganizing the Land Management Department with Chamor Land Trust that, that was designed to sort of take away from the intended purpose. And I, I absolutely want to just take this opportunity on the floor to say, Mr. Speaker, that that's absolutely nothing that I would ever desire. Having said that, there is an understanding, not only in these days of austerity, but even when the program was first put together, that the government simply does not have the money and the resources even to survey the land, Mr. Speaker, at, at that point. That's, that's one of the reasons why in this last legislature, we had to allow for certain sketches and maps to be approved as maps, because even that is so problematic. And, and the fact that current leases for residential purposes and for agriculture cannot even be parceled out. So, I lead that up to saying, Mr. Speaker, that in working with Chamor Land Trust in the, in the year and a half that I was at Land Management, although it is slow in coming, they are going to complete their rules and regulations. And they are going to have to determine what are going to be their tolerances and their allowances in terms of what they need to do to generate revenue. Currently, Mr. Speaker, there are fifty-two documents put together. If you call them a lease or a license, some of them could be interpreted that way. They're agreements anyways. And our legal counsel, Senator Espada, has explained that, that those contractual obligations, you know, can be determined to be in play and in place. In closing, Mr. Speaker, and my concern really is, there is a number of properties that are on Route One, that probably even if leased for purposes of a gas station or some sort of M2 zoning, it may be impractical for anybody to even enter into an agreement, simply because they would never be able to, or it'd be so cost prohibitive to return the property to that type of condition for residential or for agricultural, that it would make no sense to enter into the agreement to begin with. So, once again, as I really, really, really cautiously am going to watch this bill through its process, because I simply don't want to be misunderstood as, as not wanting to protect Chamor Land Trust and the properties. But there is a level, I believe, of practicality that we have to apply to this type of legislation, to not micromanage and to also allow for the generation of revenue so that Chamor Land Trust recipients can truly realize the use of the property and not what's gone over, gone on for the last decade and a half of empty promises. So, that's my position at this time, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Senator Prespio, you're recognized. Any other senator which to be heard after? Senator Prespio. Senator Prespio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise to express my concern with the bill, although I want to recognize the sponsor and his good intentions and him wanting to be consistent in trying to find ways to ensure that the Chamor Land Trust property are really used for the benefit of, of those who are eligible to use these properties, Mr. Speaker. You know, I, I rise to express a similar concern. If you look at these Chamor Land Trust properties, they should already have their designated zoning. Some are zoned industrial, some are zoned commercial, some are zoned residential, single or multifamily dwelling, some are zoned agricultural. So, as the previous speaker said, Mr. Speaker, it wouldn't make sense to have someone who is in industrial zone be a recipient of a commercial lease, and at the end of that lease, they would have to have that property either restored to agriculture or residential use, and that this lease will not be approved subject unless it's approved by the legislature, unless it has legislative approval. You know, we might, on the surface, it might seem like good public policy to ensure that all of these Chamor Land Trust properties should be used for either agriculture or residential. But in theory, it doesn't make any sense practically, Mr. Speaker, because these properties, because of their locations, are zoned specific to that location. And so my concern is if we start to have Chamor Land Trust property that's industrial zone and we start to see some leases, commercial leases issued, and then if they're subject to legislative approval, we might again be politicizing the very nature to which these properties should be used either commercial or for residential purposes. And so, you know, I, while the amendment passed to remove the line "Any such lease or license or lease where such use is authorized and shall be declared null and void," while that probably makes this bill more palatable, I still express some concerns with Section Three, where we're prohibiting the departments or agencies that have regulatory responsibilities from issuing any permits in conjunction with these licenses or leases. So, I, you know, I don't know if, if Section Three were to be deleted, if the bill would make sense. I'm hearing that there should be, there would still be some concerns. I would just rise and express an overall opposition to the bill, but want to make it very clear that the sponsor of the legislation has, legislation has worked really hard to want to preserve the intent of these Chamor Land Trust properties. And by, by lending my support to this bill might be incongruent to that kind of thinking. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to express my concerns.
Thank you, Senator Prespio. Any other senators which to be heard? If not, Madam Speaker, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, oh, wait. There was no objections, you're right, so the amendment went through. So, that already passed. I just want to make sure. Yes? Okay, so that passed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity, of course, to meet, you know, with our colleagues and to have, you know, a dialogue during the break. And I've, I've heard many of the concerns. And I think what's really important here for, for everybody to, to understand is that when the Chamor Land Trust, you know, Act was first introduced, you know, it took some time, people fought really hard, you know, the former Senator de Funtu Angel Santos fought really hard as well to get that passed. And the whole purpose, of course, that if you really look around our island, our island is, has a finite amount of, of land, and many of our people have, who have been displaced, don't have properties that, you know, they can call, you know, their own. And in the wisdom of past legislatures, of course, when they created this was to make sure that the first and foremost was to take care of the people, to take care of the lands, and that we are supposed to be custodians of those lands, not in, for the generations of today, but for future generations. The Chamor Land Trust Act, of course, is committed to advancing the social, cultural, and eco, equal, economic development and promoting the welfare of the Chamor people. Without, of course, the lands, and we've always said this, is that the land is the legacy of our people. And that's all that families with land are able to pass on from generation to generation. And without that, then we're going to be like nomads, not necessarily having any place to call home. Our people will be out there having to, to lease lands or we, our, find ourselves homeless. The Chamor Land Trust Commission, of course, was created then to be able to help and educate, you know, the community about the highest, of course, possible uses of lands. And in particular, because of who we are as a people, agriculture is a way of life, and that's the reason for agriculture, so be able to sustain our people. We also know, of course, because this is their home, that they are residents of this land, that they then be able to have a place, a piece of, of property they can call home. Now, we all know as well is that for some time now, is that the government has been unable to fund the Chamor Land Trust. And in their infinite wisdom as well, then hence the creation of commercial leases or industrial leases, so that then those monies that come in will be able to assist the, the commission to then have those funds, to have lands surveyed, and also to provide infrastructure so that then families then will be able to, to build their homes. And to date, we're finding that many of those lands that we have given out to our people have not been able to even have infrastructure brought in. And so therefore, it's incumbent upon the government to be able to assist in, by actually leasing these properties. Mr. Speaker, we know then that when companies or private organizations or go in and lease Chamor Land Trust lands, whether it's commercial leases or industrial leases, that they're normally for a long term. And then in return, however, and I'm not saying that this is something that this bill is actually imposing on the Chamor Land Trust, because we hope that the Chamor Land Trust Commission, that in their review of these leases and the, and of their proposals and what they plan to do, and how then that property should be returned and what state it should be in, so that then we would be able to continue with its original mandate, and that is, of course, for residences and agriculture. And if commercial property, companies are going to come in then for commercial reasons, and, and there are various types of activities that are out there already, then, and are being discussed in terms of what they want to do with these properties. So, we, we know of at least two companies that are interested in the quarry, and we know that there are two competing interests here, because one would want to go in and start to carve out that mound, that hill, whatever, bring it, level the property, put in the infrastructure that's necessary, and return it to then the Chamor Land Trust to use and to lease out for residences, or maybe even to use it for agriculture. And the aggregate, of course, this company then would intend to, to, to sell. The other company is to then go in and then, yes, not only then bring down that hill to, and not necessarily to keep it level and not necessarily, necessarily to put in the infrastructure and return it, but rather to now mine that area and go deeper into the ground. And then the third, of course, that's out there is the landfill. And that's a, I know, a very controversial issue. But then again, you know, in our discussion and as time has progressed, you know, we learned that there's always this new technology and what, you know, can be done. You know, usually in our thinking, that when you think of a hole of, from digging out the quarry, that it's unusable land. But, you know, there are different ways now that other countries and states have been actually just looking at creative ways to take advantage of some of the terrain, of their natural terrain, you know, of, of a, a land, and make best use of that property, where I didn't, you know, of course, it hadn't been for travels, to see that, you know, people are, are building even right along, you know, cliff lines. I mean, not necessarily sitting on the land on top, but on the side of a cliff. You know, that even with, with quarries, of course, we were talking about that right now, some sink holes that we have, that maybe you can actually put a structure above it so that it won't be wasteland, you can continue to use it for, you know, drainage. But then on top of it, you're going to be able to build a structure. The same thing could be with this quarry, where it could be tiered so that then it can have properties on those tiered lands. You see a lot of that in, you know, in Asia, where in mountains, you know, you tier it and then you have little, you know, farms there. So, again, that could be done. you know, farms there. So, again, that could be done. Now, I know with the landfill that we currently have, because of U.S. EPA's decision, that rather than go in and mine it, have a company go in and mine it and take out what they can and sell what they can, and then dig up the soil, maybe that's been contaminated, and, you know, properly dispose of them, and then reuse the land again, rather the decision was just to go in there, compact it, cover it, and leave it there for years to come. And what's going to happen, you know, it'll be unusable land versus mining and cleaning and trying to bring it back. I know never to its original state, but at least close to. So, these are all, you know, of course, reasons in which the trust was created. And I don't want us to lose sight of what that original intention is. And granted, we know too, because economically we don't have anything, we're going to need to be creative and find ways to be able to bring in money. What this bill, Mr. Speaker, really is doing is that, one, it does not want to infringe on or, you know, impede, of course, any or stop any kind of contract that has been passed or given out. And that was brought, you know, to attention with the contract laws, that the legislature can't just go in and make it now void. And then, and I'm glad that at least with that, that went through. The other, and I know that people are saying with Section 3, is that the Department, the Chamor Land Trust, of course, we've given them that fiduciary responsibility to really look at all the proposal in their leases. And to make sure then that they are guardians of these properties, and that they should make sure that whatever happens to that property, whatever they're going to give it out for in their proposal, that there's a stipulation. And I'm saying this because I want them to make sure that they do this, is that when they, whatever the project is, is that they must stipulate in that contract or proposal that they will put that property back to near, to as nearest as possible its original state, so that it will be usable land versus unusable land. And we know that when any companies go in there anyway, to whatever reasons they want to use it for, they want to maximize whatever their profits are, and they'll be able to do this at a certain time. And it can even be at, and most of the time, it's an individual's lifespan. Not, they're not going to go and say they want to lease for 100 years. And I don't think Chamor Land Trust will lease any of these commercial properties or industrial properties for 100 years. The only 100-year leases are those for residences, for the Chamor people to be able to pass on from generation to generation. That's the only case, and that's by mandate. So therefore, once the company has taken whatever they want from the land, all those natural resources, and made a profit of it, from it, then now go back and try to restore it, so that then, when the Chamor Land Trust gets the property back, they'll be able to give it again to other residences, hopefully with the infrastructure, hopefully, of course, you know, cleaned up, and hopefully that they'll be, you know, usable land. This bill wants to prevent any abuse of Chamor Land Trust lands. And it's the same way when we talk about EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, they want to also make sure they protect our environment as well. Because without our environment, we cannot survive. And many of us sometimes think we can take for our environment, use our environment, abuse our environment in our lifetime, not thinking of future generations. So, sorry, I know, it can tell, I'm not used to speaking this long because I'm losing my voice. So, I ask my colleagues to please look at the original intention of what Chamor Land Trust lands are for, for future generations, not just for the present. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Was there a motion there to move it to voting file? If so, any objection? Hearing none.
Senator Guthers, 338.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I begin, I'd like to make sure everyone has a copy of the substitute version of Bill 338.
May I ask for one minute, please? I'm sorry, we did give it to the clerk's office.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I would like to move Bill 338 for purposes of discussion to the discussion file as substituted.
On the motion to accept as substituted, here are no objections.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Mr. Speaker, I would like to move Bill 338 for purposes of discussion to the discussion file as substituted.
On the motion to accept as substituted, here are no objections.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Bill 338 as substituted is an act to amend the title and subsections 4601, 4601E, 4602, 4603, and 4605, and to add subsections 4601F, G, and A, new subsection 4611, to Article 6 of Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding the eligibility for inclusion in the enhanced placement program for public classified employees of the Government of Guam. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, all right. I apologize. Legal counsel has brought to my attention a slight matter. Again, the title of the substituted bill is an act to amend Sections 4207 of Article 2, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, and add sub, and to, and to deal with the items A, B, C, D, and E subsection, which is an added subsection, relative to the priority placement program for affected employees of the Government of Guam resulting from any reorganization or reducing, a reduction in force initiative of the executive branch. Mr. Speaker, Bill 338-31 was reported out of the committee as originally introduced. However, at the request and suggestions of the Department of Administration and the Civil Service Commission, from the hearings and from written testimony provided as a result of the introduction of the bill, in meetings with them, the recommendation is to elevate a current program that addresses the intent of this measure. The current program offered by the Government of Guam to displaced employees in the career service is listed as a priority placement program, PPP, and is contained in the Appendix C of the Department of Administration's Personal Rules and Regulations. Appendix C is appended to the substitute version of the bill that I have introduced. I am proffering the substitute version so that instead of creating a competing and separate program, the substitute version elevates and enhances the current processes of the priority placement program of the Government of Guam as contained in the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. The Department of Administration and the Civil Service Commission also strongly recommend that the new language requires the reporting of all vacancies under recruitment in all departments, bureaus, agencies, commissions, or other instrumentalities of the government, whether autonomous, semi-autonomous, or non-autonomous, in the executive branch of the Government of Guam, and that these be reported to establish a vacancy pool government-wide. This will ensure that all vacancies open for recruitment in line agencies and agencies like the Guam International Airport Authority, the Port Authority of Guam, the Guam Power Authority, the Water Works Authority, the Guam Visitors Bureau, and the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority are recorded and offered to registrants under the PPP program, the Priority Placement Program. Currently autonomous or like agencies often feel that they are not beholden to the GARR since their HR departments are often internal. So now with this codification of Appendix C of the DOA Personal Rules and Regulations, these agencies shall submit their vacancies to the Department of Administration for inclusion on the vacancy pool listing. We also cover employees affected from any reorganization or any reduction in force since the start of the advisories that were issued by the current administration, and any future actions of this or future administrations. So essentially, the section of code in Title 4 is the same in the original version of this measure and the subsequent version that is before you now. We're just moving the placement up a few sections in Title 4 from Article 6, which contain the enhanced placement provision of law. Now, the intent to protect married employees, classified employees of the Government of Guam, will be satisfied in Article 2, Chapter 4 of Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, under the Priority Placement Program. The intent of this measure is to ensure that a check and balance exists for the actions and protection that should be afforded to employees in the classified service that are or will be affected by the current reorganization and reduction in force initiative by the executive branch or any subsequent one. Now, with respect to the subsequent version, if you follow along, colleagues, in Title 1, we strike out references to Article 6 and the Enhanced Placement Program, insert relevant language from Article 2, all of four Guam Code Annotated. You can see the old language and the new language. The new language reads "an act to amend Section 4207 in Article 2, Chapter 4, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, and add sub-items A, B, C, D, and E relative to the Priority Placement Program for affected employees of the Government of Guam resulting from any reorganization or reduction in force initiative of the executive branch." In Section 1 of the substitute version, beginning on line 6 of Page 1 and ending on line 11 of Page 1, this adopts the reduction in force language of the Guam Code Annotated relative to personnel. As well, from midpoint on line 11 of Page 1 to line 14, we strike out language that references actions in 1983. And in that timeframe, we saw what was the, known as part of the initiation of the privatization efforts of the Government of Guam. In Sub-Item A, lines 15 of Page 1 to line 2 of Page 2, we adopt the language from the Priority Placement Procedure as listed in Appendix C of Chapter 1, Division 1, Title 2, Guam Administrative Rules, to the Personal Rules and Regulations of the Department Administration Government of Guam. We do this to adopt the policy as the standard policy and uniform guideline to address employees, classified employees, affected by adverse effects as a result of such actions, but not limited to consolidation, transfer functions, lack of work or funds, position classification, or reduction of force. We also add the following on line 2 of Page 2, to discourage any wiggle room, quote, "or executive branch reorganization, restructuring, reform, modernization, streamlining, innovation, or transformation initiatives." Period, unquote. In Sub-Item B, lines 4 to 11 of Page 2, we essentially establish a vacancy pool and direct all departments, bureaus, agencies, commissions, or other instrumentalities, whether autonomous, semi-autonomous, or non-autonomous, in the executive branch of the Government of Guam. In Sub-Item C, lines 12 to 16 of Page 2, we provide a safe pay provision and funding source. In Sub-Item D, lines 17 to 20 of Page 2, a requirement of quarterly reports of vacancies and how they were filled by all agencies shall be submitted to the Department of Administration for compilation. In Sub-Item E, lines 21 to 24 of Page 2, states that the Civil Service Commission shall be the final adjudicatory body when registrants feel bypassed for a position they are qualified for. And Section 2, lines 25 to 30 of Page 3, addresses any persons in the classified service already affected by the current administration's actions and future actions by this or any other future administration. Mr. Speaker and colleagues, as you see from the bill, the substitute bill, basically all we're doing here is ensuring that any career classified employees in good standing, who may be adversely impacted because of a reorganization or a reduction in force initiative, has priority placement for consideration for reemployment in positions that they may be qualified for in the future. I think with this bill, the substitute bill, if it's enacted into law, this will ally a lot of fears and concerns expressed by our career service employees who've committed themselves and have functioned with commitment in the public service. So I ask you to please consider this. It's a very reasonable initiative. It simply expands what we already have and codifies it in law, rather than simply in administrative procedure that is subject to interpretations by different entities for different reasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Any other senator which we heard? Senator Yamashita, and then Senator Ada.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to stand in full support of Bill Number 338-31 as substituted. I stand in full support of this because there have been, unfortunately, quite a few meetings held by those who are getting noticed that they will no longer be working and providing support and services or leadership in a variety of positions as a result of reorganization efforts. And I stand in support of this because the idea that these folks will no longer have a job is really disheartening in that they have provided excellent work performance all along. But an agency or a group of folks have decided that the way agencies are working can be bettered. And so while I have repeatedly asked employees to make sure they know what their rights are, I've repeatedly asked civil service to make sure agencies know processes, and I've repeatedly asked directors to understand that there are processes, particularly when talking to employees about talking to employees about their livelihood, their jobs. And so this will help them know that as we do reorganize, and there's a great sense of health to reorganizing systems, we can do things better, we can be smarter about the way we're delivering supports and services. We should also know that we're protecting the actual people who deliver. And so we want to ensure that they, if they are qualified, they've done a good job, that they will have an opportunity to continue to earn a living. I think the opportunity to provide for themselves and their family is something that the government wants to continue to be able to do. No handouts, but an opportunity to earn, an opportunity to be a part of the society that keeps our island moving. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 338-31. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Senator Tom Ada.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Certainly, I support the concept of the bill, but I would ask if the author would yield, maybe to clarify some questions that I may have. The first question that I have is, it's not clear from this if, let's say, if, let's say, an employee, they're having a downsizing, let's say, a Department of Public Works, and so they've got some employees that are going to be let go, and there may be positions, let's say, in the Guam Power Authority that he may be, that the individual may be qualified for. So now that they have, they are in this enhanced placement program, does that in any way mean then that he, that that individual basically bumps out that employee in the Guam Power Authority who conceivably is also qualified for the job? But because he is not in this enhanced placement program, because the job that he currently, the position that he currently holds is not going to be phased out, then now this person from another department who is now without a job is now going to fill that position, which otherwise could have been filled through a promotion by the employee in, let's say, Guam Power Authority, just using that example? If the author would probably, would yield?
Do you yield, Senator Guthers?
Certainly.
Please.
I think the way I would answer that question is to bring us back to the privatization of the Guam Telephone Authority. The initial law that was established with respect to priority placement came through this legislature, and the intent of that law was to ensure that any GTA employees that were displaced, who wanted to retain public service rather than go into the private sector through GTA, would be given priority placement. And that's exactly what this bill would do. If a person from a government agency is laid off due to a government action, whatever that action may be, who is laid off in good standing, they shall be considered as a priority placement for any vacancy for which they have the requisite skills and requirements, and they meet the requirements of the position that they apply for. So we're not inventing the wheel here. All we are doing is simply replicating what this government has already committed itself to do under the privatization initiatives that started with GTA, and simply apply the same concept to the initiatives that may come from a reorganization, reduction in force, consolidation, or any other government action. And remember, these folks are career employees, they are classified employees of the government, who must be in good standing and who must be qualified for the positions that they apply for. If they don't meet the qualifications, they don't have the training, have the skills, they don't have the certifications, then they would not be eligible for those particular positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess then, what I understand from that explanation is that a planned reduction in force or reorganization, again, using an example, Department of Public Works, possibly could then stifle any upward mobility in another organization because these individuals are going to be given priority placement and could possibly just, you know, stifle upward mobility in another organization. So that kind of causes me some concern because within the organization, again, in this case, the receiving organization, you may have employees in there who are just as qualified for that position and, but will not be able to compete for it for the next higher position that they have gotten themselves qualified for because somebody else was given a priority placement, preferential treatment, whatever you want to call it. And I think that has some unfairness, that is unfair in and of itself. Now, so I would be concerned about that. If, however, we have a situation where, let's say, that receiving agency does have a vacancy and it, and there's nobody, you know, it is not basically, and I guess in these agencies, when a position becomes vacant, it can either, in some cases, can be designated as an in-house vacancy only, such that it's got to be filled from within. And if they find that there's nobody from within to be able to fill that position, then they open it up for government-wide or open to the public. Then, at that time, you know, certainly I can see then that this current Gov-Guam employee from a losing agency probably should be given that preferential treatment to go ahead and fill that position, provided, of course, that they are qualified for that position. The other concern that I have, and if the author would yield, is on Page Two, on line 21, that Item E there, it talks about how if an individual believes that they have been bypassed during the hiring process for a position that they feel they are qualified for, that then he can file that with the Civil Service Commission, for the Civil Service Commission to review it. But it just kind of leaves us hanging there. I'm not sure. So, Civil Service Commission reviews it and says, yep, you're qualified for that position, and you did not get it. And then that kind of leaves the question of, then what? And so if the author maybe might be able to clarify that?
A couple of things, Mr. Speaker. First, going back to the first item, again, I want to emphasize that the individual competes for the position. It's not given to them automatically. They have to compete for the position like anyone else competes for the position, whether it's a promotional position or a regular position, they have to compete for it. They're not saying, you get this position, you have to compete for it, you have to be qualified for it. And from my experience, most positions in the government of Guam have to be open competitive positions. Now, for the second question, it's a very interesting question. The Civil Service Commission already does this. All we're doing is reaffirming the role of the Civil Service Commission to receive any expressions of concern or complaints regarding individuals who feel that they were not treated fairly under this program. Thank you very much. And the Civil Service Commission, by law, has the authority to work with the departments and agencies to remedy problems resulting from misapplication of hiring procedures or even reviewing hiring procedures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I guess that's really all the questions that I have regarding the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? You may close, Senator Guthers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. You know, ordinarily, we wish we wouldn't have to have a bill like this, but, you know, we're living in times where a change seems to be part of the equation, certainly, hopefully change that is necessary and justified. But when changes occur in the career service, the classified service of the government of Guam, we want to ensure that the merit system operates throughout the process. And we have discovered in our review of the current procedures, administrative procedures that cover initiatives such as reorganization and reductions in forces, et cetera, there are some serious gaps that need to be closed. And that really is the intent of this bill, to ensure those gaps are closed and that classified employees of this government, who are qualified and competent but who may be displaced because of reorganization initiatives, have the opportunity to compete for other positions that they may be qualified for in a deliberate manner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope my colleagues will give their support to this bill. Thank you.
On the motion to place Bill 338 in the voting file, any objection? Hearing no objection. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized on Bill 382.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I ask that Bill Number 382-31 as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Microeconomic Affairs and Human and Natural Resources be put in the third reading file, and I ask to be able to speak to it.
On the motion to accept Bill 382 as substituted, any objection to accepting the substituted version? On the motion to place it in the third reading file for discussion, hearing no objection. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, we've spent most of our morning talking about land. In fact, in the first year, we've spent a lot of session talking about land, and that just really makes a lot of sense. Mr. Speaker, perhaps the best, the most precious resource of our island community are her people, all of the people. And then after the people are the environment. And some of the statements I will be making will be simply reiterating everything that our speaker earlier had said about a bill that she was representing about the need to protect our land. We have, on our island that is 31 miles long and maybe four miles wide, we have little land. And as we talk about Tomorrowland Trust and having families taking, giving them opportunity for land, we also have government-owned forest land. But we don't have a system that helps the Department of Agriculture, who is in charge of forestry and soil resources, we don't have a system in place that allows them to do their work. We have, at the beginning of this year, had the Western Forestry Leadership Coalition at our table with the chairperson of the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Microeconomic Affairs and Human Natural Resources. And that conversation, I remember, was so invigorating because of the possibilities that can happen if we actually develop our forest system. It was after that that we worked with Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Agriculture, Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Land Management, over a series of months. And nationally, when they heard that we were moving towards creating a Guam Forest System, they wrote on behalf and said this was the most exciting endeavor. Nationally, since the 1900s, the value of forest, the need to protect land, the understanding of natural resources, and how our lands play into the equilibrium of our life and of our livelihood, and as Speaker Juan Pats said earlier, the legacy of what we are leaving behind for our people, is really critical. And I want to read a little bit of what, of what the National Association of State Foresters submitted in testifying in support of this bill. They really believe, and as they do their work, that the Guam Forest System to the government and citizens in Guam will be similar to the benefits provided by other state forests. And this, these benefits would include an economic asset stimulating the economies of adjacent communities and supporting jobs, regulated commercial and non-commercial uses could provide opportunities to generate revenue to support the system, controlled landing activities that can contribute to public-private partnerships and private-sector investments in wood products, fruit, agriculture, and recreation industries, a tourist attraction bringing hikes, outdoor recreations, and eco-tourists to the island, permanent protection for sensitive areas and watersheds that protect coral reefs, a stable land base conducive to long-term scientific research and partnerships to universities and conservation organizations, demonstration areas for educating the public and showcasing best management practices for managing forest, fire, and invasive species, and the Guam Forest System could serve as a center of excellence throughout the Pacific region to enhance training opportunities for forestry and agriculture workers and natural resource professionals. Mr. Speaker, as we all read our national newsletters, we know that in the first week of January, there was an agriculture summit in DC where 47 states and at least seven Canadian provinces participated. And higher at the top of their list was, they all proclaimed that in this time of challenging times across the world, the land, agriculture, that whole arena is one of the few sectors that are positive right now. And it just makes really real good sense that we on Guam take advantage of a time where we can pull together and say that our forest, our lands, can be further developed for a variety of reasons. The conversations have been vibrant. We've had Parks and Rec saying, well, we have some purview over land. EPA says we have purview over land. Land Management definitely says they have purview over land, and so does Department of Agriculture. But what they also echoed loudly over and over again was that they were very willing and open to come together, work together, and develop a system that will actually define an inventory of land that we don't have right now, an inventory of land that defines our forests, that defines all of our limestone forests and our conservation areas. That would include the Seti Bay Project and, of course, our cross-island forest. We don't have an inventory that defines our lot number, size, and location. This Guam Forest System land would also define public interest for the system, would propose the maintenance enhancement of the overall quality of the system environment, would provide stipulations for public areas for recreation and educational use, would define the education for the purpose of conservation, preservation, environmental science, and other related curriculum, would talk about possible fee schedules. Of course, everything would be adjudicated, and it would come back to us for a final say. Mr. Speaker, the excitement of this idea is that we're coming together, we're looking at our limited resources, we're saying what is really important, and that is our land, and we want to be smart about it. I ask that my colleagues really consider this bill. I look forward to conversation, to anything that would strengthen it, to make it clearer. And I ask for support for this bill. Thank you. And before I do stop right now, I want to say that I truly, truly appreciate the support, the guidance that was provided by Ms. Mendiola at a Senator Respecho's office in this work. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Any senators wish to be heard on the bill? On the main motion? Do you want, which, did you wish to speak? Or? Okay. Go ahead. Somebody make the motion.
So I make the motion that Senator Duñez be the second co-sponsor on this bill?
Hearing no objection. Do you wish to close?
I thank everyone for their consideration. I hope to get their vote when we vote. Thank you very much.
All right. On the motion to place it in the voting file, hearing, seeing no objection. Senator Munya Barnes, you're recognized on 390.
Test. Mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing no objection. Please.
Mr. Speaker, this bill will add an, is an act to adding a new Item J to Section 77104 of Chapter 77, Title I of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing the Director of Parks and Recreation with the authority to determine the appropriate number of vendors for the Guam Park System and to repeal Section 2105 of Chapter Two of Division One of the Title 23 of the Guam Administrative Regulations relative to the number of allowable park vendors. This was at the request of the commission members and knowing that there are over 78 parks, we do, it would just say that the, notwithstanding any provisions of law, the administrative rule or regulations determine the appropriate number of vendors for each park under the department's jurisdiction, provided that such determination shall not unduly impede park use or access by the members of the general public. In essence, that is the addition, Mr. Speaker. In essence, that is the addition, Mr. Speaker. There has been a proposed draft that was sent, and of course, when rules and regulations are given, it does come to this body for final approval. But there wasn't a submission by the Department of Parks and Recreation from the general manager in reference to some of the proposed changes. And they have, there is a set number of vendors that can be at each park system, Mr. Speaker. And of course, giving the director the authority to make some changes and proposals, of course, with the inclusion of the commission, it would just make for better opportunities for a community who have some means to create some job opportunities there, but to also contribute to the economic support of our island residents. And the commission supported this. The Director of Parks and Recreation gave his support, and I'm asking that our body can give me consideration to support this effort. Thank you.
On Bill 390, any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I rise in support of the bill, but if the author would yield, I do have some questions. On page one, on line 10 through 11, well, the particular section begins by outlining the duties of the directors, and I just, I'm, I just don't see how the last sentence there, well, we outlined that he has oversight of sports, playgrounds, and all that, and then at the end we say, provided that any rule shall not be effective until approved by the legislature, if the legislature fails to act, and that just seems out of place. We do know there is existing, there is existing policy already that rules that need legislative approval shall go through the AAA process, and if it languishes down here for 120 days, then it lapses into approval. So I would just move that maybe we can just clean it up by eliminating, deleting the language there, starting on line 10, where it says, provided that any rule shall not be effective until approved, all the way down to the end of line 12, and then lines one and two on page two. And that's just, I guess it's probably more housekeeping than anything.
No objection to the amendment? Please submit that to the clerk so that we have that clear. Thank you.
The second item, Mr. Speaker, is on page two, line 15 there. Again, to be consistent, we're describing the duties of the directors. So on line 15 there, item I, I think we intended that line to say that, at least the title of it, is that his duty is to designate alcohol-free zones within the system. So again, it's, the substance of what was intended is still there, it's just the form that it probably should read, that on item I, his duty is to designate alcohol-free zones within the park system. And then the paragraph goes on to elaborate on what that is.
That is the law as it's currently written right now, unless you're going to amend the law. The following line is what is being proposed to be added to currently existing statute.
I understand. Well, but we're dealing with Bill 3.
Oh, so you want to amend the law to strike that?
Yeah. And what, no, to strike which one? Line 15?
What is currently in law?
Well, since we're at it now, we might as well fix it up now.
Okay. So the amendment is going to be?
On line 15, page two, simply to read as follows. His duty, item I, is to designate alcohol-free zones within the Guam territorial park system. Again, it's just a matter of form. The substance is still there.
On the proposed amendment? Again, please make sure that you sign off on that amendment.
I will. And finally, Mr. Speaker, on the same page, line 22, now, this is the added language, and I'm concerned about the phrase, notwithstanding any other provision of law, administrative rule, or regulation, to allow the director to determine the appropriate number of vendors for each park. And I would propose that we delete that phrase because there may be another provision of law which really would prohibit him from doing that for, and was, and is in existence for some good purpose. I don't know if there's anything that exists. If it does, we probably should revisit it, if that needs to be revisited. But I think to put that language in there, notwithstanding any other provision of law, it's really like writing a blank check.
That is the full intent of 390? And so?
Well, if that's the intent, then, to give him a blank check.
But you rose in support of the bill, so I'm just wondering. All right. On the amendment to strike the language proposed?
Just based on that, I know he shared with the intent of supporting the efforts, but, Mr. Speaker, that's the intent of the whole bill, is to add this section in, and notwithstanding, this was at the request so that they could be able to provide the rules and regs, and that it would come back to us. So I'm just gonna respectfully object.
There is an objection. Anything further, Senator Adda, on your request to strike? And any senator who wishes to speak on Senator Tom Adda's amendment to strike the proposed section?
No. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And of course, if that was the intent then, was to give the director a blank check to just, to determine whatever he wants to do, regardless of if there's any other provision of law that may not allow him to do that, then I think I will have to withdraw my support for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? On the bill, any other senator wish to be heard? You may close, Senator Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I appreciate the concern of the previous speaker. The intent of this was to allow the latitude for the director to make the appropriate changes, work closely with the commission members of his board, but also as a support to show the intent of where, and the scope, and to look at the regulations. The Department of Parks and Recs has provided a proposal, a draft, of where they want to...
The clerk has corrected me. He's withdrawn, Senator Adda's withdrawn his support for the bill, but I, he needs to withdraw his amendment, or we need to vote on his amendment to strike.
Okay.
There was an objection to your motion to strike the proposed language, and I need to get a vote since there was an objection, unless you withdraw.
Well, I don't know that I need to withdraw my amendment.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, I made the mistake of not taking a vote. So on the amendment?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right.
All those in favor of the Adda amendment to strike the section starting at line 21, please raise your right hand. I'm sorry, line 22. Those voting with Senator Adda on his amendment to strike? One, two. Correct. I, we understand that up here.
All right. Just to make it clear, I'm not proposing to delete the, giving the director the authority to determine the appropriate number of vendors. I am simply making the amendment that he should not be given free hand by placing that language there, notwithstanding any other provision of law, which might otherwise then not allow him to do that, administrative rule or regulation. Because if there is something out there that prohibits him from making that determination, then we should identify that and correct that.
Okay. So your amendment stops at regulation?
Correct.
On the Adda amendment, notwithstanding any other provision of law or regulation, those in favor, please raise your right hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40. You may close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just move that, it'd be moved to the voting file.
On the motion to place it in the voting file, any objection? Seeing no objection. Senator Rispio, you're recognized on 406.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 406 be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
On the motion, hearing no, or seeing no objection, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First, Mr. Speaker, I want to rise and publicly express my appreciation for the appropriations chairman for having heard this bill and having a public hearing so that the legislature can be more aware, and the community can be more aware of this 17-year-old debt that is owed by the governor of Guam to this construction company that was supposed to be paid for the work that they did on the Tramora Village Phase One project. Now, I learned of this situation about a year and a half ago, and as soon as I brought this matter to the attention of the current director of Tramora Affairs, Mr. Joseph Cameron, as well as the current director of the Department of Public Works, former Senator Joanne Brown, they were both in very much support of having this debt paid. As you know, they claimed that they were incoming administration, and that they required that authorization needed to be made by the legislature because, in fact, it's a prior year obligation. And that was the position of the previous administration, Mr. Speaker, is what I've been told. Now, this legislature, through the current Budget Act, we authorize, not only authorize this to be a prior year authorization, Mr. Speaker, but we also authorize the Department of Public Works to pay this from this current fiscal year's budget. And as we know, the Department of Public Works has gone on record saying that they're already short as it is from their perspective, and this $136,000 payment is something they could not, could not come up with. And so I found a way to have this company be able to avail itself to what other vendors that are owed by the government of Guam do, is to allow for a tax offset. But in this case, Mr. Speaker, we're allowing that the tax offset automatically be given by the director of administration, but also that this tax offset be assignable if, in the event, this company does not have this much business privilege taxes to pay for. And so, you know, I want to thank the appropriations committee for reporting the bill out. I noticed on the committee report, there was only one member who voted to pass, and the remaining members who signed off reported to, signed to report out only. I know that there's some angst with this kind of situation because every time we provide for an offset and have that offset assigned, that kind of depletes the gross receipts taxes that we're supposed to be collecting. And I want to be the first to publicly disclose that. But we are dealing with an amount that I believe is manageable. We're dealing with a situation where we have a moral obligation to make do, and if we just continue to wait for the normal processes that this government undertakes to make these things realized, it may take another 17 years in this case, Mr. Speaker. I know that the Attorney General's office at the public hearing expressed some concerns that this company did not do enough to try to collect on this payment. I want to rise to publicly say that that's further from the truth. They've been receiving assurances year after year that this matter will be paid. And I think to just follow the Attorney General's advice and not do anything at this point really adds insult to injury for this company that's been very patient over the years, and it punishes a company like this that's been very patient and trusting and believing that they would be paid. I kind of liken it to the taxpayer situation, Mr. Speaker. Monies that are owed to taxpayers are rightful debt of this government, and it's something that this legislature stepped up to make sure that that matter was remedied. And so Bill 406 is another opportunity for us to rise as a body to recognize that this longstanding obligation owed to this one company has to be, has to be met. The principal amount, Mr. Speaker, is $136,000, but because of the penalty and interest over the years, it's gone up an additional $244,000. So the longer it takes to make good on this, the more the people of Guam would have to pay. So I ask unanimous consent to approve this bill, and if there's any bill signing ceremony that I believe is worthy of a bill signing ceremony is this one. In all seriousness, Mr. Speaker, should this bill pass, and should the governor see fit to sign into law, I think he should do a bill signing ceremony, just as he's done with other landmark-type legislations, to recognize that the government of Guam will make do and make good on any monies that it's owed to anyone, whether it's a taxpayer, whether it's a donor recipient, or in this case, a businessman that's done a legitimate, provide a legitimate service to the people of Guam by way of a contract, and the governor of Guam has not lived up to that contractual obligation. So I thank you for the opportunity to present Bill 406, and again, I move to be placed in the voting file.
Senators wish to be heard? Senator Duñez? Any other senator? After Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez should recognize.
Mr. Speaker, I certainly understand the sentiments of the retiring speaker. I'm inclined to support this piece of legislation. I just would like to request for the author to yield to a question.
Pose your question, please.
Mr. Speaker, I'm a little concerned. I just want to see how the sum of the interest and penalties was arrived at, considering the fact that it is close to double the amount of the principal. I know that there's considerable time here, but I just wanted to establish from the author what was, what was the formula used, and how did we arrive at this interest payment, interest and penalty?
Do you yield, Senator Rispio?
Yes, I do, Mr. Speaker. I thank the center for that question. This amount came from the most recent invoice that the company submitted to the Department of Public Works, and I believe the director of administration, and they've acknowledged receipt of this invoice. So I'm just pulling from that invoice that they've issued, that they submitted to the government of Guam.
This seems to me, Mr. Speaker, to be a little, a little bit pricey, if that's a decent term.
We were talking about 17 years of interest penalties, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, I think if we, Mr. Speaker, I think that if we used it, I mean, I would like to see a little bit more information on this, simply on the basis of if you were like it into what the company's capability of doing with that balance and funds, if you were to liken it into a savings account perhaps, or a TCD, would it even yield that type of interest, even for the amount of 16 years? I mean, I'm just a little concerned. I guess by the time we're done with this, the complete sum of this would be almost $400,000, upwards of $400,000. I'm more inclined to even think that the penalties, in terms of how they're listed here, would be the adequate amount to, and if the Attorney General's even opinion is, I mean, I guess I could discuss that with the author as well, but at this time, I'm not raising an objection, but I think that we should discuss this a little more. Could we have a one-minute recess?
We'll recess. Where we, what we says? Any other senator wish to be heard? Something has to happen, Mr. Speaker. This is a glaring example of how we cannot let these things happen specifically and especially because this government is consistently broke. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Any other senator wish to be heard? Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Espisho, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I really appreciate the discussion that we had on this bill as well as the slight discourse. But from my understanding, Mr. Speaker, this company has been very aggressive, and I was privy to a, several thick, a couple inches thick file of what they've done. And I even saw a letter from Senator Pangolinen to the Attorney General's Office several years ago asking about this debt and the Attorney General opined that it's a legitimate debt of the Government of Guam. Now, this company, while they weren't very vocal about it, I know that they've exhausted every effort to try to make the government pay on this obligation. And because they've been quiet about it, because they've been patient about it, I don't think, you know, it's never entered into the media. When the, the media first reported on the bill I introduced to authorize this prior year obligation, we saw officials from the administration come out and say that they support the payment of this, but the issue is where are we going to get the money? You know, whenever we're faced with a situation of where are we going to get the money, we oftentimes have to be creative. And this mechanism designed in Bill 406, 406 is absolutely creative in the sense that it, it provides for what's already being offered to every single vendor, to the Government of Guam. If a business is not paid by ninety days, the Director of Administration has the statutory authority to provide for a tax offset, but they can't go beyond that two percent cap. In this case, because of the amount that we're dealing with, we're allowing that this tax offset be issued immediately. And in this case, we're allowing that this tax offset be assignable should the company avail themselves, need to avail themselves to that, to that mechanism. And so, you know, in the current Budget Act, we've also allowed for doctors who are owed by MIP to receive a tax offset. This is not, what I'm doing or proposing here is not unprecedented. These doctors have been getting certificates because they're owed by MIP, and we know that historically MIP has been underfunded because of the demand placed on that program. But the problem with that, Mr. Speaker, is that the doctors receive more tax offsets than they can use for their own business privilege taxes. And so in the Budget Act, we allow for those tax offsets to be assignable. Now, if you agree that this is a debt, which it is, why should we make it difficult for these companies to make good, or for the government for that matter, to step up and stand up and say that we're going to do this? We, we did it with a tax refunds, we did it with the caller recipients. This body expressed some concern with the amount of exposure we're going to take our Government of Guam up to. And thankfully, we're not borrowing up to a hundred percent of our capacity in what we had to go through in recent weeks. But I know that none of us want to ever deal with the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, and Bill 406 represents a kind of eight-hundred-pound gorilla that we just have to address one bite at a time. And I, I think Bill 406 will finally put closure to this company that had to wait for seventeen years. I, I have no personal relationship with this company, and my reason for wanting to advocate for them, Mr. Speaker, is because of the paper trail that I see from our previous, from previous members of this legislature, from previous administrations, as well as from our current appropriations chairman, who tried to get the Government of Guam. He, when I first introduced the, the bill that's now law that provided for this prior year authorization, Speaker Pangolinen said that he believed that they didn't need it, that the Attorney General said they didn't need it, but the administration said they needed it. And then when we gave it to them, now it's an issue of cash. And so Bill 406 will address the administration's concern. Again, I'm pleading to the Governor that should he see fit to sign this, that he really make a big to-do about this bill and have a formal bill signing ceremony so that this company can at least be recognized for the amount of years it had to wait. But also, we send a message to other individuals who want to do business with the Government of Guam that although we're strapped for cash, at the end of the day, we'll always find a way to make good on our financial commitments and obligations to these individuals. So I thank you again, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity, and I, I hope we can all rise as a body and make that same message collectively. Thank you.
On the motion placed on the voting file, any objection? On the, Senator Tyron, do you want to do your motion, your resolution now, or do you want to do after lunch? No, we have two that are moved, but let's take yours, and then we'll go for lunch break.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Resolution 280, 81 calls this body together to stand in support of our local guard and reserve components. As you well know, the, the Department of Defense is looking at a huge budget, budget cut that is going to affect our armed forces throughout the nation, and ultimately, it will affect our local guard and reserve component. So what this resolution does is it asks the, the Department of Defense to reconsider any proposed cuts that will affect our local guard and reserve component. One thing that we want to recognize is that there's a large population of our, our island that do, are part of this local reserve and guard component, the volunteer force, the part-time forces that are called upon to defend our freedom, and they're also called upon in times of emergency locally. We have spoken with the National Guard. They have not yet received any word on how this, the cuts will affect our local reservists. But they do say ultimately, if there are any cuts that are going to be made, they will affect us. So what we're doing is we're asking this body to come and say to the Department of Defense, if you have any plans to make local cuts, please reconsider. Please consider the fact that we are strategically located. Please consider the fact that we have men and women who go out and fight for this nation. And we do, we do also recognize that we have men and women who have placed their lives on the line and in harm's way so that they could fight for our nation's freedom. So I ask my colleagues to also rise and support, show the guard and reserve that as they fight for our freedom, that we have a body here that is also willing to go head-to-head with our, our nation's leaders to say we're fighting for them. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues to support this as a, if we could put this on the voting file for, in the third reading so that we could vote on it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
On the initial motion to place it in the third reading file, no objection. Any other senators wish to be heard on the resolution? Seeing no hands, you may close. On the motion to place it in the voting file, no objection. We're recessed until two o'clock.